Welcome to the July 12, 2021. Tarryn Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to all stand and rise for which of these.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law which stands when we question any doubt, individual liberty, and justice for all.
We are, of course, experiencing technical difficulties with our Zoom. So if anyone is watching or trying to watch from Zoom, I guess they can still, how can they, you can, somebody can modify, can monitor whether there's someone.
Mike is monitoring our Zoom, and so if someone wants to speak, it will handle it in the same way. Just when it comes time for public comment on any application, we'll have Mike refer to his personal Zoom account and we'll, you know, either put his phone up to the microphone or deal with it in that way, but I think we'll be okay.
I think so. And Matt, are you able to hear us okay? Just since you.
Yes, I can.
Okay, alright, well, it's kind of working, so let's go with it. Alright, I'll do a short rule call. Diane Leavitt is not present. Tony D.
Present.
Paula, he's here. Art Grace.
Present.
Larry Slum.
Here.
Christine.
Here.
Phyllis.
Here.
Anthony Straka.
Here.
And Simona Cullen.
Here.
Okay, because one member is, one regular member is absent. Our first alternate, Tony Straka, will be voting. If there are any recusals, then our second alternate, Simona Cullen, will be voting. For any of you not familiar with how the zoning board of appeals operates, first part of our meeting is we take testimony from the applicant describing what they want to do. The public is invited to make any comments that they have about the application. When all the information has been gathered, we'll close the public hearing. And at the end of each of the applications towards the end, we'll then deliberate and make a decision. If the case is not adjourned and we make a deliberation tonight, you can either stay and wait for our determination, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay. So that brings us to number one on the agenda, the Ask a College, my understanding, is that that was withdrawn? Or is that going to be just adjourned?
It's adjourned at the moment.
Okay, then we'll just adjourn that to the August 9th meeting? I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Okay, that carries. Next is Stewart's. There's a request to adjourn that until the August 9th meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Alright, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? So that motion carries. The next, number three, is Poughkeepsie United Methodist Church. Is there someone here for that application? Come on up. I could give a preface and squirm, but if you might, we'll do it again, just make sure it counts.
What was your name, sir?
Lloyd Wright.
Mr. Wright, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Alright, so what's new since last time?
So I, we checked and Chrissy found that the, there was a question about the community nursery school sign that we already had, and there was a variance that had been approved in 1995 for that.
For just, just one sign, alright?
Just one sign. But just the community nursery school sign, in addition to the sign that the church has had since 1964. And then there was also a request for the exact dimensions of the existing sign, plus the little piece on top. And so I went out and measured it and I submitted to Chrissy, I don't know if you handed that out to them.
Yeah, we did our photographs.
Yes, okay, good. So it was actually a little deceiving because we have a hedge at the bottom, but when I actually measured it all the way down to the ground, it was seven feet by 10 feet. And the top of the sign is actually level with the road because there's a slope going down, so the sign is actually below grade level of the road.
Okay. And based upon that, it has to be readvertised, adjourned and readvertised, is that correct? Do we still need to send something to the county, or do they have enough information, or?
They have the information now.
They have the information now? Okay. Alright, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Alright, there's no one in the audience? If there's anyone on Zoom.
Anyone on Zoom wishing to? Comment on this application, United Methodist Church.
Nope.
Nope. Alright, thank you. There are four people on there, so.
Alright, I'll move to adjourn this one to the August 9th.
Second.
Meeting. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Okay, that brings us to number four. Uighur Homes, 11 Clifdale Court. Is there someone here for that application? Is that the one who's coming?
That's the one who's coming afterwards, yeah.
Alright, then we'll do a second call on that one. That brings us to item number five. Richard Peeny, 2 Reno Road. Come on up, have a seat.
Mr. Peeny, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Why don't you describe your application?
Well, the house that we are selling, the lot that it's on is shallow but very wide. The back door originally had a very narrow concrete step that I actually fell off of once. And I wanted to put something there that was safer, a little bit more edible and good looking. So I, in 2006, asked around, looked around, got somebody to give me an estimate on the deck. That person said, we'll take care of it. They built it. And we had it for all these years. And come to find out when we went to sell the house, that the shallowness of the backyard was, it was too shallow. And the neighbor directly in back of us never said anything they liked it. And there are no neighbors to either side for quite a distance. So this only came up when the house went up for sale.
Okay.
And so I'm looking for a variance.
Alright, and so I have a letter from Sarah Hart at 59 Alder Drive. Is that your number to the rear?
Yes.
Okay. And she says, I just have a few questions from my own knowledge regarding the above grid number, referring actually to you. I live at 59 Alder Drive, so the side of my house lines up with their backyard and the deck in question. I have no issue with the current deck and size as it stands. My question is for the future, if the new owners want to enlarge the deck, they too will have to apply for a new variance. Am I correct? As you can see by the size of this variance, we are quite close in proximity. Thanks for your help on this. I will be hoping, hopping, I will be hopping on the call tonight till this is in. So hopefully she's, she's hopped on. And so, anyone else have any comments from the public about this application?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah?
I just want to let you know I'm on, and no, I have no issue as with the current deck.
Super, thank you.
Okay. And was there a building, there was probably never any building permit for the deck, is that fair to say?
As far as I know, there was not. There was a plan, and it had a stamp on it that said, with a drawing, it said approved. That was what I knew at the time. And.
There was a drawing that said approved? Did it say who it was approved by?
It was part of the package of our forms that I.
I do believe there was a building permit, it was never closed out.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why it was approved though. It was stamped approved, I have no idea why.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions. No good.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. And that was, that was the only person from the public that was on, that wanted to comment?
We can ask again, is there anyone else who's on the phone for the application at 2 Reno Road?
Nope.
No.
Yes.
If someone wanted to redo the deck and make it larger, they would, would they indeed need to return?
Yeah. Technically, they would need to return if they wanted to make it closer to the rear property, but it looks like they have enough of a side yard that the lot is wide, so they could go out to the side without, but if they wanted to get any closer to the rear property, they definitely would need to come back for a variance.
Okay. If there are no further questions and there's no further comment from the public, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
I just have one more, one question, it's an hour again.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't catch, I didn't catch some of the conversation, but just to confirm, if the new owners indeed want to enlarge the deck, they would have to go through the same process?
If they were being enlarged to make it closer to that property line, it would need another variance. There does appear to be room on the sides that they might be able to enlarge it without need for a variance. Is that correct? Yep, so that's, that's, so that's the answer. Yeah?
Okay, so pretty much same process?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
Wonderful, that's what I need to know. Like I said, I'm good with the current, with the current deck, I have no issues.
So does anybody have a concern about the deck being enlarged widthwise and the encroachment on the backyard, on the back lot?
There's no application for that at this point, so it's just to legalize what's there.
If they wouldn't, my thought was that if we limit it to the size of the deck that's now, the width of the deck now, if they wanted, if the new owners wanted to increase the size of the deck lengthwise, widthwise.
Actually, now that I've said that.
Yes, it would still, if you increase the width, it would.
It's still, that would be. I take back what I said, they'd need to come back regardless.
Oh, okay.
So they would need to come back regardless, okay.
Because they would, they're, the wider, they'd be able to go out to the side as long as they were more than, what is it? The rear yard?
Nine.
No, I mean, what's the requirement?
Twenty, twenty or thirty?
Yeah, so there's no way they'd be able to enlarge the deck without coming back for a variance.
Okay. Alright, then if there's, I made a motion to close.
I second you.
Alright, since I'm done discussing it, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So you can wait 11 minutes for our decision, or you can, it'll probably be more than 11 minutes. But you can either wait or call in the morning.
I'll wait, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to number six, are the Glen 12 Main Street.
Ms. Chen.
Yes.
I'll be recusing myself.
Very well. So Ms. Cullen, you'll be voting on this one.
Mr. Glen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. Okay, why don't you describe your application?
I'm a resident of New Hamburg, and I purchased directly across from my house, what at one time was the New Hamburg Post Office. And it's been not used for quite a long time. And I applied, had designs done and applied to restore the structure, adding a small deck on the back to make it a little more nice for living, and rebuilding the garage, and just increasing the height of the gable, just to give it a little more character. And those items were flagged on my permit because it's non-conforming in that area, and other setbacks originally are met, so I'm looking for relief on those items.
Okay, and the old footprint of the house, of the building?
I'm building within that exact footprint. I'm only squaring off the back of the house for the deck, but I'm staying in the exact same footprint.
Alright, and the height of the building? How does that compare to the building just to the right of it as you're facing it?
From the top of the peak to the top, my peak, my peak is probably 12 feet lower.
Okay. Alright. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
It looks simple on the drawing, but the deck which will be added will not exceed the, it's just going to square off.
It's just square off the back of the structure.
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Simone?
The area that was the garage, I guess that's nonexistent right now, that is, is that going to be?
A garage.
A garage as well?
Yeah. Alright, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this, first of all? Alright, I don't see anybody. Anybody on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom for the project of 12 Main Street?
No.
Nobody? Okay, thank you.
Alright, hearing nothing, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. That brings us to item number seven. Thank you, everyone. Matthew, Jennifer, oh, Matt's on the phone.
Oh, yes, this is the gentleman who's on the phone, yeah.
So this is Matt and Jennifer Giorgio, 39 Regency Drive.
I guess I swear.
Yes.
Mr. Giorgio, do you?
Raise your hand higher.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Can, can everyone, can people hear that? Yes, okay, wow, thank you. Alright, so why don't you describe your application?
Alright, I'll, I'll try to speak up, just let me know if, if you don't hear me too well here. But basically what I'm, what I'm looking to do, we, my wife and I purchased, and our family purchased this home in 2012. There was an existing retaining wall that was already on the property. You guys will see the outlay of the Dutchess County parcel in the pictures that I put in my application. That, my backyard is a pretty steep hill, so the original owner wanted a flat parcel on the, on the backside of the property, which was the need for the original retaining wall. Come to find out, they did not get permits. The wall was just under eight feet, so I don't believe they, they may have needed or required a permit. But that wall, as your inspectors who came out to my property yesterday saw, is now failing. And it's a significant hazard, not only to my family, but anyone that comes and visits the property. My wife and I have three young children, animals, et cetera. We're just really concerned for the wall at this point. So what we have decided to do is simply, probably doing a bit of overkill by doing an industrial grade ready rock wall. But I want to just do that wall immediately up around the existing wall to fortify it, so it doesn't completely fail going down, down my hill. Now, because of the grade on my property line in my backyard, it is requiring to go up around the existing wall, it's bringing the backside of that wall up over eight feet, which is why I'm presenting this case to the zoning department because the code requires me to get this variance and fence variance in order to accomplish what I am looking to do and, and make it a secure area for, for, for my family and for, like I said, for anybody that visits the property. So that's, that's essentially what I'm looking to accomplish with this application today.
Okay. Is it fair to say that the slope in your backyard, that, that's, it's, that's the steepest part of the slope in your backyard? Is that about right where the retaining wall is?
Yes, yes, to that northern side of the property. It, it grades slightly less as you get to the southern side of my property, but on that northern side, it is the steepest, yes.
Okay. Then I don't have any other questions. Christine?
And the fence that you're going to put on top of the wall is going to be the same size as the one that's there now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Art?
You're welcome.
No questions? Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No question.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application?
Okay, how about on the Zoom call, I think there was somebody earlier, maybe?
Hi, yes, hi, this is, I'm one of their neighbors. And as a parent of a child who frequents their home, I would support their application. I've seen the wall, and, and in agreement that it does need to repair, that is being set forth.
Okay, what was your name, I'm sorry?
My first name is Joanne, and my last name is Strohns, and I live at 36 Regency Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Nope, I think. Anyone else on the call? No? Alright, seeing, hearing no one else, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. That brings us to item number eight. Wayne Zatell, 22 Longview Road. Would you, state, state your name?
Wayne Zatell.
Mr. Zatell, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Alright, why don't you describe the application?
I'm trying to work over my existing deck because I have a handicapped elevator and it keeps getting wet and causing me repairs.
Okay. And so you've had some problems with that apparatus getting wet and then not functioning?
Yeah, the water gets in the switch, corrodes it, and then I gotta buy a new switch.
Okay.
I mean, it, the elevator's warranty, but the company sent the switch, but I gotta pay somebody always to repair it.
Alright, and if there's an upgrade, that'd be, would it, is, how significantly would that, how much would that cost?
Quite a few thousand dollars, I think.
Okay.
If I, I could get a whole enclosure like, like you see it, I think down here on Raymond Avenue, the image place has one, that's thousands of dollars, so.
Okay. Is it fair to say that it's not going to extend any farther than the existing stairwell and the main portion of the deck that's there now, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Any questions? Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Simone?
No question.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Come on up.
There's another microphone there, if you could just turn that towards you, yeah, thank you.
Alright, would you state your name?
My name is Joel Jensen, I'm the neighbor directly next to Mr. Zatell at 24 Longview.
Mr. Jensen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
That is correct, yes. Having seen the elevator put in, along with multiple repairmen to come out to fix it, Mr. Zatell can't work, and this is a cost that's just driving up his bills. I know that covering it up from the rain would save him probably several thousand dollars over the course of his lifetime, so we would love to see this put in for him. It's just his neighbors and friendly people.
Okay, so you're gonna help?
We're totally good with it.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, anyone on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom wishing to comment on this application?
No, sir, yes, I'm, I'm his son-in-law.
Okay, what is your name, sir?
Patrick Mayo, M A Y O.
Mr. Mayo, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Alright, what would you like to say?
Obviously, I support his application. He, as you can see, he is disabled, and that's his main mode of transportation to get out and into the home. And he has wasted a lot of money getting it fixed constantly because it's not covered, and the water's getting in and the parts are rusting. So obviously, I support his application, and hopefully I could help him get it done.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright. And so, just let me be clear, it's just a roof, there's not going to be a complete enclosure? Is that correct?
Excuse me?
That was, here was a question for the applicant, actually.
Oh, alright.
Yeah. Thank you, though.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, seeing nothing, or no one, or not hearing anyone from Zoom, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing in this case.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. So, let's see.
So we do have the one additional public hearing, but if you want to maybe, do we want to go to deliberation for these others?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, that brings us to item number five. 2 Reno Road. Okay, so this is the pre-existing deck. Anybody having problems with this one? The lot is very, very shallow. There's, I mean, the house isn't within the rear yard setback, so there's really no other, nothing. It seems to have been there a number of years without any complaints. Anybody have any problem?
No.
Okay. Then Christine, do I make a motion?
Sure, do you want to do the findings?
Oh, I guess I will. If you want to accept them. I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance. The deck has existed there for quite some time. It's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and there doesn't, based upon the testimony of the neighbors, there doesn't appear to be any detriment to the nearby properties. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, based upon the shallowness of the lot, there's no other way to attain what the applicant wishes to do. And whether the requested area variance is substantial. Mathematically, it is, but based upon, again, the, the size of the lot and the location of the house, it's, it's, it's not particularly enclosing. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there are no physical or environmental conditions associated with this application. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. And then Christine, if you don't.
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries seven zero. That brings us to item number six. Anyone have any concerns about this?
No.
No? Okay. Then I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced but in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance. This repurposes an existing empty building or have no impact on nearby properties or the neighborhood. It is consistent with the neighborhood, and I think it would, it would certainly be a benefit to the neighborhood. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, due to the small lot size and the existing structure, this is the only option for the applicant to, to get what they're requiring or they're requesting. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but it's the same footprint as the pre-existing building, so it should have no real impact. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, there are no physical or environmental issues with this application. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was self-created, but that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. Art, do you mind making this motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Alright, any discussion on this one? Alright, then, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries seven zero.
And Phyllis, you abstained in the round, right? You recused yourself.
I have one recusal. And so that brings us to item number seven. Which I put someplace. Check it someplace. Thirty-nine Regency Drive. Any concerns with this one? No, okay, then I'll offer these findings, whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance. Um, the retaining wall and the fence have existed for quite some time. Um, it is pretty much shielded from the road and neighbors. It is a safety issue without the, the retaining wall in itself right now in its current condition is a safety issue. And, and even without that retaining wall, if you, if this were denied and you have to regrade everything, um, it would still be a safety issue. And so, um, at, since all lots have some slope in the back of them, I think it's consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. There's no other, um, way to obtain the desired result due to the steep slope of the building lot. Whether the area variance is substantial, it's mathematically it is, but the fence itself, um, question? Uh, the fence itself, um. The fence itself is, is necessary, uh, for safety and the retaining wall is necessary to make the, uh, portion of the backyard usable. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Um, there do not, there not, there does not appear to be any physical or environmental impacts from this application. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it's, it certainly was, um, but that's not a reason to deny the application. And I would offer those findings. Um, Larry, do you mind making a motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item numbers.
Seven.
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. And approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion about this one? Okay, then, uh, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries seven zero. That brings us to number eight, twenty-two Longview. Um, any concerns about this one?
No.
No, okay, then I would offer these findings, whether an undesirable change were produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the variance. It is consistent, it's consistent with the neighborhood, um, uh, there'll be no change in that and it, it certainly won't have any detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Um, it's likely that even if he, um, if the applicant were to do some method other than a, a roof, it would still require a variance. And so I think that this is a, uh, the least expensive method for him to get what he needs and wants. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, uh, it may be, but it doesn't, it doesn't encroach any further than the existing stairs and, uh, the main portion of the existing deck. And so its impact is minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the, on the physical and environmental conditions, there are no, um, environmental or physical, uh, impacts from this application. And while this was self-created, that's not a reason to deny the application. And so I would offer those findings. Any, any, any concerns? Uh, Tony, do you mind doing that?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. The decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
Any discussions? All right, then all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries seven zero. Okay? All right, that brings us back to item number four. Why don't you come on up?
Uh, you just have a seat right there. And thank you for driving up. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
I appreciate that I was up here just in the nick of time. Fishing.
But the door was locked, you know. Yep.
So, all right, um, I think you're still under oath, but let's, you know, we do it.
Okay. Well, you're, okay, what was your name, sir?
Stephen Rieger.
Mr. Rieger, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. All right, what's news since the last meeting?
Okay, so, um, so there was a, a site visit, and Michael sent us a memo suggesting that, um, that we should look at, we look at the public access easements on the existing subdivision plan. And we're not the owners of the entire subdivision, we're just the owners of two lots. And so we approached the, um, the owner of the rest of the lots and suggested that we, you know, um, in along the lines what Michael had suggested was that we get rid of, you know, a five-foot easement along the property line between this project and the neighboring project and use the common driveway as access. And, um, he wasn't interested. And he, I think, had, um, some ill-feeling about the process when he got the subdivision approved and how involved and, how involved it was, how long it took, how expensive it was. And he didn't wanna, really didn't wanna consider it. And so, um, so Michael and the alternative had suggested that we look, that we, where our, the home that we're proposing to build on lot one is closer to the public access easement, that we create some type of, um, some type of screening, which we are agreeable in doing. So what we would like to propose is in the area where the home is closer than seventy-five feet to the property line, that rather than use fencing, which we think would be, um, a little harsh and, and not as welcoming, we'd like to, we'd like to plant trees and, um, to screen the path off from the home in the area where it's closer than seventy-five feet to the property line. Seventy-five feet was the original standard in the subdivision plan.
So, um, what you're intending, ha, I'd like to protect both the, the homeowner, I'm, I'm actually on both sides, but the new homeowner would be closer to the easement and, and the public that's gonna be walking through there. So what are you proposing? What kind of vegetation are you proposing?
What kind of, what kind of, um, so we would, we would put up, um, evergreen trees, a row of evergreen trees.
Okay, but like a shorter? So what type of evergreen trees? I mean, you're talking about a s-
Um, I hadn't really picked a species out, but maybe, but maybe blue, blue spruce.
Okay. Um, okay, and how about, um, maintaining the pathway? Any concerns? Are you able to?
Yeah, so we have limited control over that, you know, we can, um, you know, we can establish the path in the area on our lots. But beyond that, it's between the property and the town originally put requirements on that we had nothing to do with. And the property owner has, you know, it's between the town and the property owner. I mean, there's not much that we can do once we get beyond.
Well, I think we can take care of that, but if you were, um, able to mark the entrance and then, and set up screen and some sort of like, um, notes or something for the, for the pathway, then I think we'd be on the new property owner to maintain that, I think, if we put that condition on it. Is that something you can do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, the town often uses wood chips for those types of trails, so if that were, uh, something we could, you know, specify, I think that would be, that would be good.
That would be fine, um, the one thing, we, we don't wanna, you know, it's supposed to be a natural trail, so we don't wanna take trees down.
Hmm.
We thought we would have it meander between the existing vegetation. You know, we could do some, some wood whacking, but I don't want to take down any trees to establish this, this doesn't seem to make sense.
As long as it stays within the easement, right? I mean, that has to, right?
All right. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Uh, all right.
No questions?
Eric?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Simone? All right, so is it fair to say that when we were there, the neighbor who had some concerns, if those concerns got addressed?
Please, oh, go ahead.
One of the questions was that tree that was, it looked like it was in the process of dying. And I don't know if it was ever figured out who owned that tree. Do you have a sense, sir?
You know what, I wasn't there that day, it was my brother.
Oh, sorry.
And so I, you know, he filled me in, but I didn't hear about the tree, so I apologize.
There's one, one rather large tree that's probably eight percent dead. And they don't know on the, your brother didn't.
So is it, is it a danger?
It could be a danger to, probably the new house more so than the old house.
And that was the concern of the neighbors.
So if it's, if it's near the new house, we'd certainly be interested in taking a closer look at it. If it's the, the second.
Along the property line too, it may very well be within the easement, which would then make it even better of an idea to, to remove it. Um, just you'll, you'll need to be able to get through that spot, so.
I think it was okay with us and, and this gentleman, I think if they just pointed out which tree it was, it'd be real obvious. I mean, it's, it's, it's real easy to spot.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah. Other than that, I just wanna thank you for coming out with us and sending your brother. And, you know, I think it worked well between your group and the neighbors. I think it went very well.
Yeah, I think it, you, yeah.
It was a very, it was a very important meeting as far as I'm concerned to get this resolved. I'm good.
Okay. Is anyone from the audience?
Is anyone on the Zoom who wishes to speak to this application at eleven Clifdale Court? Okay, anyone else? I see Mr. Lent, Mr. Ziteal, or Mrs. Ziteal. Everybody, okay? All right. That's all I got. We have a staff report for this.
There is a staff report?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, hearing and seeing no one, uh, to comment on this, then I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. So I, I think the staff report gives a recommendation that we accept the, the variance. Um, I would add, I would suggest though that we, we make some conditions that, um, well, both the applicant and the, and running with the, with the land, that the easement be screened, that the entrance be marked, and that the easement be at least maintained with wood chips or some other natural, um, material.
And then look at that tree on the property line, right?
And look at the tree.
And so I'd like to say to be more specific that the, the screening would be within the area where the house, the house is closer than seventy-five feet to the trail. So.
Where the house is closer than seventy-five feet from the property line.
Oh, okay.
Which is the original setback, right? Yeah.
Okay. Is that any different than just, well, is that any different than just going along the easement?
I think as you get further.
Five feet?
Yeah, I think as you get further towards the back of that lot, you're further than that, because the original house was supposed to be seventy-five feet.
From the, from the property.
From the property line, and so it, it does make sense that there's a s, an area of the lot where.
Okay, there's more than seventy-five, okay, all right, that's.
Yeah.
All right, um, Tony, do you mind making that motion?
Uh, sure, okay. Uh, very good, okay. All right, um, I, uh, I move that the, uh, that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item, uh, this is what, item four regarding Clifdale Court. And, uh, this decision is based upon a review of the application, uh, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, uh, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. And, uh, it would be, uh, in approving this, uh, this would be subject to the following conditions. First of all, that the, uh, that the entrance to the, uh, public right-of-way be, uh, be marked. Second of all, that the applicant provide some kind of screening between the, uh, the new property and the right-of-way in that area where the, uh. The distance to the, uh, uh, property line is, is less than seventy-five feet. Uh, to, to place some materials along the path, uh, such as wood chips. And also to, uh, further examine the, the tree that's been identified as being an issue to see whether or not, uh, that, uh, dead or largely dead tree should be removed. And upon, uh, meaning, uh, all of those conditions would move to, uh, we have the variance request.
Can I ask one follow-up question? Um, I don't think we talked about it, but the parking area, there's the two parking spaces, they're not completely, you know, it looks like they were start, they put some, uh, item four or something down. I just wanna make sure that when we, it's part, it's part of lot one, that those two spaces are cleared and, and properly maintained as part of this. Is that fair to?
Yeah, so whatever, I mean, uh, whatever's on the subdivision plan.
You would do.
We will do.
Okay.
And just on clear about the seventy-five foot, but it's when the easement is closer to seventy-five feet of the property line or the house?
It's where the house is clo, when, any portion of the house that is closer than seventy-five feet from the property line.
That's a little different than what, I think, what you said.
Okay.
Okay, just on, that's clear.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, then, uh, any further discussion? Was there a second to that?
Second.
Very well. Any fir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Um, I don't believe there's any further business for tonight, and so I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All right, I wanna thank you all for coming.